Okay.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Sweetie. You want to go, Paul? Brian Hope that learned. No, was it in?
Yeah.
The designer?
Here.
On a bond?
Here.
C. Carter.
President.
Entertaining a motion.
I have a motion to approve the December 2nd meetings.
That's second.
On favor.
Hi.
Number four.
Yeah, I don't know. Do you want to kind of explain what that is, number public hearing proposed zone code amendments? Is that just?
Sure. Yes, I'll start out and then if there's any public comment, we can do that. So, the, uh, there's been discussion, I think it was discussion at the last thing, zoning commission meeting about RV parks. Uh, we have several in the community and the zoning code right now doesn't really have much definition to what an RV park even is, frankly. Uh, so what we have tonight is proposed amendments to zoning code that define RV parks as well as campgrounds. And then basically creates a more complete condition use permit provision. Uh, we do have a condition use permit provision in the code right now, but it's, it's okay actually, but it's somewhat incomplete. And so we kind of expanded upon that, make it a little bit more clear exactly how those work. And then the other thing is, right now, um, uh, RV parks are permitted by right in C2 zones and higher. So you have C2, C3 in commercial zones, and you have Lakefront Commercial C, Lakefront Commercial 2 and 3. And so those zones are permitted by right currently, meaning there's no particular requirement, no zoning approval requirement. The, this, the proposed amendments would create, would require condition use permit for any RV park in any commercial zone. So that is, of course, a change from what, what we have currently. In more, in recent history, um, the last, I guess, two or three years, there's been, um, two situations in which the city changed zoning of property to allow RV parks. Um, and so there was a zoning approval, but it was basically a rezoning, um, from what I, I wasn't here for this, but, um. So, again, this would change that to anytime you want to propose an RV park, it would require CUP in commercial zones. And then they wouldn't have residential zones, period. You'd only be able to do them in commercial zones, so.
Or agricultural.
Um, yeah, you could do them in agriculture, there, there's a limitation there. For any agricultural zone properties, you can have it, and you look at the provision, um, uh, let me see how it works.
Prohibits such uses in any residential zoning and permits such uses with conditions in an agricultural zoning.
Yeah, so basically it would say, in an agricultural zone, you can do an RV park for private, non-commercial use only, uh, which includes spaces for no more than four vehicles, which is located in the lot area 3, secrets. So the intent there is, uh, yes, you can do it, but it can't be a
Can't be a big commercial thing.
Commercial operation, um, and it has to be limited, you know, four or less, so.
Okay.
Yes.
I like that. I'm glad we've got that spelled out now. I think we needed that, especially with the growth of RV parks.
Yeah, I should say, one thing it doesn't do is it doesn't set any type of parameters or what we would call performance standards for an RV park. So, and this has been discussed internally, um, basically saying that each space needs to be so big or that your drive aisles, your driveways, the soap need to be so big, right? There, we don't have that in zoning code now, and this, of course, does not do that. Um, we could, if you all want to do that. My preference is probably to leave it up to the developer or whoever to propose that, okay? And then we kind of make a determination, determination whether or not we find it to be acceptable.
Well, my question on that would be, and maybe you know this, Scott, is there any kind of mandate of farm emergency vehicles, like ambulance, fire trucks, in RV parks? Do you know of any kind of mandates on that?
Not to my knowledge.
For the roads being so large.
Fire, Katie would probably be able to answer Sunrise Beach had anything on that, but
Yeah.
I don't know anything state-wise that would.
Yeah.
It'd be a local property district ordinance, um, and of course, that's separate from us.
Mm-hmm.
You know, part of my reasoning is that, of course, you're dealing with large vehicles, right? And, uh, so they've got to have enough room for the vehicles to enter park spaces. Um, so, I mean, is it possible to pack it in so tightly that it'd create a, you know, truck problem, I suppose? That seems pretty unlikely to me. And the fire code would get some good point, I mean, regardless, it's not, it would be our regulation. If the fire district has a regulation, then it would apply.
Okay.
I, I think our biggest concern, like Karen, Steve said, is that by default connected to roads, but, um, how are those marked and labeled and how to find spots? Because that's, that's a big thing is
Depending upon how big the park is.
They have 600 plus campsites.
Exactly.
I'm at site 146 out of 546.
Got it. And what is staff presentation? Is that you?
Just, uh.
So, does anybody have any comments or questions?
Anything? We'll give you five minutes. Okay, three minutes. Uh, no public comments?
Were you going to say something?
Oh, I was, he actually said what I was thinking, that by the time you get the roads set up for class A RVs, fire truck should be able to make its way down there. And, and also, I, I do think that naming each road, you guys having a law for emergency personnel of roads within the campgrounds and numbers on the roads is probably
Okay.
Yeah. The only other comment I have, are, are we going to regulate how, how long a RV can be there on a 12-year or 12-month time, or they can, and then like permanent structures, or?
So, this, this amendment does not specifically do that. It does define campground as a temporary seasonal use. It, it doesn't, in the, in the RV park definition, it doesn't provide any sort of definition like that. It just says an RV park is, I don't know, I have it right in front of me, it has four or more RV parks makes an RV park. Um, there's been discussion about, you know, the, the, the point I made is that RV parks are not housing developments, right? They're temporary. They're RV parks for recreation, for seasonal, you know, people have fun and so forth. Um, and so how you distinguish between them is kind of a trick. I mean, it really is. Um, you know, right now, there's nothing in our code that's, that would speak to that directly. Um, and, you know, it's kind of a question mark whether or not you guys want to, you know, do that.
Well, the only, the only, uh, comment I would have about that is, if someone moves into an RV park with a decent camper of some kind, and that's where they live, I mean, they go get a pushed office box and that's where they live full-time, is that something we could be concerned about?
True, that question for you all.
And the reason I say that is because the city of Sunrise Beach does not allow mobile homes, so.
I know, and, and, and that's the discussion we get. Because we do, the zoning code basically prohibits mobile homes, right? And so if you set that standard, then how can you have an RV park that becomes permanent year-round housing? And you, I don't think you can. You can't have one or the other. If you decide you want to have RVs and it's okay for people living on the year-round, well, then you probably should revise your mobile, frankly. So, I, you know, I know it's conversations with chief, it seems like we had, we don't have a lot of year-round residences. We probably have a few.
So with, with, uh, roll, the only ones I know of right now are, are in the, uh, the Hawk Lake campground. Like, those are the only ones that are full-time.
Is that?
People are using.
We, we have about probably four, like, four, maybe five
Yeah.
Who are month-to-month.
Yeah, they're basically four weeks at a time, and then they can pick up and leave at any time.
There's no
So you don't, you don't have a rule against it?
One has stayed probably three months. Actually, Pete is probably the longest one that stays with us. I have a question also about the, the conditional use. Is it going to be a definable time? Let's say an investor comes in and wants to buy a piece of land and wants to do an RV park. You will consider the conditional use only as it relates to an RV park or just for that lot? It'll be given conditional, because conditional use is, is kind of a death sentence to a lot of investors and, and, and people looking to invest into a community because that simply means you don't have the predictability of the future. I know gas stations have to deal with that, for example, when they get a short window of conditional use permit and, you know, should it be revoked, they have to tear everything up and, and move away. Do you have a timeframe? Would it be a one year, five year?
So if you apply for a RV park and we set it up under the zoning of C with a conditional use, does that specify that this is only good for a year or does it, is it in eternity?
Okay, so this is probably more legal question, but the way I've always been is the conditional use, it becomes a zoning entitlement, okay? It, it is in place, frankly, in perpetuity forever, as long as the use is adhering to the conditions that are set. So you can't, I mean, I assume you could if the ordinance says you can only do this for one year, then, but
It doesn't say that.
Right, right. If you have an ordinance that prevents conditional use, it is ongoing. The only thing that would, would cause it to be revoked is if, you know, whatever conditions they were set, let's just say, for example, we said, uh, no year-round use in a new RV park, and then clearly they were using it for year-round purposes, then you could revoke this CUP and there'd be a, you know, potential
So it would be per business? Like, uh, somebody comes in today and, and requests permit for an RV park? Would that be his until if he sold it, would it move to the next person as long as it remains as is with the CUP?
I've always been advised, yes.
Okay, alright. Well, that make, I mean, that makes sense to me. I mean, and the CUP would, would spell out those things. I mean, and, and we don't, right now, say anything about living in them forever. But I mean, I guess, uh, wouldn't part of that be where it is? I mean, where it's going to be located or whatever, and, you know, we would examine what the street, streets are around it, the businesses are around it, wouldn't that be part of the R examination as far as the permit goes?
Yeah, and, and, and condition use permit is evaluated on, is really kind of site-specific, right? So, uh, in a certain site, you might want to put in certain conditions that you wouldn't in a different site, um, you know.
Let's forget, let's forget that, yeah.
This might be an example, or, you know, a, a larger entrance, or, you know, there could be just different, um, special conditions. But, you know, getting down and into a more of, like, regulating, again, like, a size of a space, every space must be so big, I think that's more, it's a little bit different. That becomes a kind of a zoning code provision that we're fighting all.
Yeah. Well, I like that it's kind of, uh, per site.
There's a code of standards, uh, put out by the National RV Park Association who specify those things. And, uh, you, you can choose to ignore it, but most parks are built kind of along those lines and they take into account their turn rates, for example, so you don't build your spots so that nobody can get into them.
Well, it would seem to me like the fire department, that when they do their inspection, that would be what they would be looking at is accessibility and Okay, nobody else have any questions?
I do have a question. When it comes to these RV parks, if it's going to be in the city limits and there's water available there and sewer, does this determine, being sound, we're going to have multiple units to protect them? Is that going to have to fall back on them to have fire hydrants installed, or would that be go back to the owner?
Fire hydrants, I don't know, can you think about it? But as far as
As far as our waters.
Yeah, but we don't regulate fire distinct, I mean, the fire department decides where those belong, right?
That's true.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, well, let's just say, uh
If there's an existing main there, there's existing sewer, we have to do a tap to, to supply water and sewer. The fire department's probably going to require
They do.
They do?
We want one.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
If the fire, if the fire department requires it, then the owner has to pay.
That's, that was my question.
Yes.
Okay.
But it would not be a city requirement, um, again, that would require that we adopt a fire code or, I mean, we have to go to that level. But, yeah, I would basically default to whatever the fire code says and let them, uh, regulate that. Um, I would say one thing, if water and sewer is available to any development, whatever it is, then you must connect, right? And so that, it's not included in the zoning code amendment, but I think it should be a condition of any
Right, right. Well, that's in our water and sewer ordinance. You have connection available, must be.
But, you know, again, the type of connection could be, is a consideration and, you know, just how it's going to be, how it's going to work. I think, um, generally speaking, you're probably going to want Lisa to in service to these RV parks. Possibly bigger, depending on how much, you know, how many spaces are proposed. But, yeah, we might be getting a little bit more into details now, but, um, yeah, I mean, it, it's, the connection, in my opinion, must be there and then the author has to pay for whatever costs associated with it.
Well, so, I guess we're still on the ordinance part, so we are looking at making a recommendation to the board to look at it and, and approve it.
I'd like to, I don't know, submit this, but you can look at it sometime, but it's, actually, it's Walsos RV ordinance.
Okay.
And, I mean, it goes into detail, and I don't, I guess I don't know whether to have that kind of detail, like the size of the roads and the curves are in there and sewer and garbage and, so they're trying to keep an RV park clean and sure. So I don't know how detailed you get, or you stay, stay out of the details and just zone the land.
Um, yeah, be happy to look at it.
Well, I think basically what we're dealing with here isn't so much infrastructure as what it is, just a zoning
Just the zoning part, yes.
And being sound, we have not adapted the new ordinances for this zoning. I'd like to make a motion that we
Recommend to the board?
Recommend to the board that this would be approved before we make a recommendation. It should be hard for us to make a recommendation without these being approved. Right, and that'd be my motion, not to make this happen until this ordinance is approved.
He's, in other words, let, letting the board pass this before we even talk about the application that's on the board?
Um, you certainly can do that. And you could do it, um
Well, if the application is asking for the zoning to be what we've got in here, then it's still something we could look at.
Right, I, I, I'm not opposed to hearing their proposal or seeing what they've got in mind. I'm just saying, before we make a recommendation to the board for acceptance or deny, I would like to see these ordinances passed.
I mean, you certainly could do that. Obviously, we delay, potentially delay the CUP, but, I mean, you could pull out of that deal. Get money in the ground, so.
Well, that's why I said maybe we should look at what the application looks like and at least
I, that's
At least that.
Okay.
You know, that's, I mean, we're late getting this together, so I hate to postpone the entire presentation because of that.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that the, they can be, they can be looked at independent of each other. Um, and so if you all want to put certain conditions upon the RV park, you know, that is being proposed, you can do that. You know, this ordinance would need to be in place in order to
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to say, roundabout way. So I, I think if we, we should recommend that we, the board looks at this and passes it.
Correct.
And we've already done that, right, Dalia?
No, we only had, no.
We did a motion. Okay. Second.
On favor.
Alright.
Alright.
Alright. Okay, so that's a done deal.
Just for clarity, so the, the, what was set up tonight, we'll go to the board trustees at the meeting next Tuesday night.
Correct.
Okay, do you want to present what you're doing with the RV park?
Yeah, so I was, I actually, I'm going to be, I thought this meeting was next weekend. I was told about it today at 1:00. So, I was going to have packets to hand out to all of you, but we're going to have to just go a little bit formal on this. Are you all familiar with that plot of land, if you're interested with the calls, sex and everything? Um, so what we have on our business plan right now is to put $2.4 million into infrastructure over the next five years.
This is in your packet?
These, these designs right here, which one are we looking at? So the building position and a few things of that has already been changed after I've been talking to the senior partners. Um, the building where the store and everything, it's going to actually be on the other side of the pole, it's like providing more space between it and the existing building that's there at the real estate office. Um, the, where the sites sit exactly will not be that tight together. We're, we're going to try to leave as many trees in there. Um, this is what makes the most sense for our plumber. I have a master plumber and a master electrician. Um, I own a renewable energy company, Modern Power, and we have 140 commercial solar panels that will be going on top of the main store. We are going to be running this facility at as close to carbon neutral as absolutely possible. I mean, so we have, we have yet to push it all the way through our engineering, but depending on what your guys' decision is, we look to get started on that, you know, as soon as possible. We had a contingency on the land offer. If, um, you guys do want to prove it, we will not be buying the land. And then that, that, they assess for Jane Lynch.
And you do understand we're the planning and zoning, we can recommend to the board, the board actually is who will approve it. So on your application, you're asking for a CUP application and
Well, what I was originally asking for was to have it rezoned as C2. And, uh, and he recommended especially that, he said that was the best way to go.
What is the land right now? What is it?
C1.
C1? Oh, it's not really C1.
The C2 would encompass having a restaurant, the
C1 is a restaurant, right? And C2 is not, so we'd almost need both zoning in order to do an RV.
And you're talking about
I'm not really sure that, so, the reason that I proposed him doing the CUP is that it's going to need a rezoning regardless.
Right.
C2 or the CUP, my opinion, the whole stretch there is C1. And I felt pretty strongly, frankly, that we'd be better to just do the conditional use permit so we even know specifically what's being proposed. And then, again, the approval would be about a specific project, ninety spaces, store, whatever, however it ends up. And so that way, everybody can understand exactly what's being
But he's, he's still, it's going to have to move to the C2 with, with, no? He can stay C1 with the special, uh, conditions.
Yeah, my understanding is that, it seems like that plot of land, you know, is a pretty big section to do just like a restaurant or something. So it seems like a good use of the land to be able to build it up, bring in that many more people, just boost in your local economy here. And I know you guys don't have a problem with that, all of your, I mean, this is a huge tourist destination.
Right.
And it's going to get busier now that the toll bridge is down.
Right.
People are going to be looking for places to go, your infrastructure is going to grow tremendously on this site.
Is that, uh, building in front of this land, the, the realtors and everything, is a C1 zoning also?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
I did, I did stop by the, um, the office up there today. I spoke with one of the gentlemen in the office, he said that the board is aware of it, um, of the park building. That, that's really all the information I got. I got to visit for a while. I didn't get down here until about 4:00 and then they were already
Well, they would have been alerted by mail that we were having a public hearing on it, so.
And, and, and I spoke to Dave Payne, the executive director, and they were not available for the meeting. I think they're just having an event tonight, but he, uh, he doesn't tend to come to the next meeting, the
To the board's meeting. Well, and it's interesting, we're talking about the zoning only, so we're talking about leaving it a C1 with a CUP application. Do we know what those particulars are going to be or that we can
What you're asking is what's in the CUP?
Yes.
And what he's proposed.
Just what we see right here, so
And once we get, like, actual engineered plans, we'll absolutely send them out. And, and as we had mentioned, we'll, we plan on naming And and as we had mentioned, well, we plan on naming all the roads that. About already, and some of the names are already kind of chosen, so.
Well, and my question would be. Even if us as a planning and zoning group recommended to the board to allow you to have the the zoning, the CUP. The board's still gonna wanna know all those details before they pass it, so. You know, you, this, this is your first step, obviously, just to be able to get the application in. But the board will have no, probably more information, right?
Yes, it's purely up to the board.
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking about having engineers drawings and everything, will you have that by next Tuesday?
Engineering costs about fifty thousand dollars, so, I mean, I don't really need to invest fifty thousand dollars into a piece of property that I don't.
Right, but.
I can have the more elaborate cell phone, but it's not gonna be standardized engineers. It's not gonna be actual planned, not gonna, you know, get the master electrician to design the park, you know.
Cause we're looking at a store, an office with a shower, a pool, a restaurant. Parking lot, pavilion, and ninety spaces, so. That is the details that we have.
I do, I do have one question for you, just for cabin season?
Yes, sir. Yep. They're gonna, they're gonna have a lot of blast and we, I spoke with. And um, we talked about the different types of cabins that he liked and what types he didn't like. And glamping there to pretty much out, he said he's had a lot of fires with those in this area. Um, I spoke with him about how he would like us to go about cleaning the, cleaning the land off through a bunch of tree tops and stops down there. We uh, have a pretty good game plan open as far as. I have been in touch with him, what we're gonna require.
I do have one question, um, the spacing. Quote offer between this property and the. And the board you have just talked, what do you have in mind here?
So where that cul-de-sac is at, and then that, if you would like to refer to this photo, he's got here. So at first, we had this building sitting there, we're actually gonna probably move this building to the other side of this cul-de-sac. So that's gonna give us. There, and we're gonna clean those trees off, but I think that's the best area to go about it. I'm gonna catch more sun with my single fish roof if I get on this. Now, I do have, I do have the type of buildings and everything. Um, they're gonna have a rustic modern build, they're gonna be single fish roofs, uh, they're gonna be darkened color. A lot of wood accents on them. The single fish roofs are gonna be ideal for maximum solar coverage on top. So we're gonna be running standing seam metal, we'll be clamping our solar at the top, we're not gonna have any penetration through the buildings. And that's gonna maximize our efficiency.
Yeah, I don't wanna speak for the board of researchers, but that was one concern.
Is theirs.
Yeah, you know, he said the way it was drawn, it looked like they'd have to utilize, you know, their property and said, of course, that's, you know, it would not be permitted.
Yeah, so I I could, oh, and actually, that was one of the things I wanted to do before I came today, was move the location of that to the other side.
You're talking about the shower building?
Yeah, the the bigger red.
To move that over on this side?
Yeah, right here too. So when you pull into the property, you you'll see that first, and it'll be off of that property line by the laser. And um, the way the land allows. We, we're gonna kind of have to. Show the hills a little bit, um, will be further off that property line than that one road. It's showing there by the building.
Right.
Um. The, the C CAD program. Is really ideal. Kind of just to get us through really quick. So, but I absolutely have a problem getting us a new rendering to the board meeting. And when is that board meeting?
Tuesday.
Next week, fourteen. That's, that's what I thought this meeting. I will get, I can get back to my homework. Um, is there anything else that you guys could request that may need to be seen? Um, now, I could, I could have. I could have a master plumber or a master electrician sign off on the stuff, saying that they are going to. Look over all of the engineering and sign off on the engineering. And that, as far as that goes. Most important pieces of this puzzle is like.
Well, our, our business here is mainly zoning. Your structure is that, that's gonna be a board thing, but the, here, we are just interested in. Do we wanna have this stuff zoning, the the CUP or RV park? That's really our only question. To recommend to the board.
And so, since, since we haven't passed this. Would this actually fall under whatever ordinance we have now? And kind of get grandfathered into that?
Yeah, yes, yeah, uh. We have a conditional use permit provision right now, of course, so we would just need to treat it as. You know, a request for a CUP for RV park at this location. And, you know, the, the, the new definitions, I guess, it's again, it's more of a legal question. Wouldn't necessarily apply to this project. Um, although because they're kind of happening on the basic same track, it's possibly even stuck with the ordinances of the. The zoning co-ordinance gets approved first, the CUP gets approved second, and then there's any co-ordinance would apply to the CUP. I don't know it's of any particular consequence, honestly.
We can do first, second reading on that ordinance. Since it's been in the works for. A while.
Too much.
We've talked about it, and so it's not like we're surprised. Not like we're surprised, um. So yes, but because we have to do the recommendation for it to move to the board. That's the part we need to talk about right now is. Um, an RV park on Odo, off of Odo, nine. Pots, five cabin, a pool, a restaurant, a shower. It, is that something that's gonna be good for Sunrise Beach? I think in tourist tourism, I think yes. Um. The road is obviously well worth accepting that traffic. It's uh. Off the beaten path, a little bit.
Is there a turn lane there?
The third lane, you mean?
I know that is a concern.
No.
I agree.
That's, and that's a MODOC thing, so.
Do any of the RV parks have a third line now through there? And that bracket, movies, move on them?
You don't.
Where?
By hopefully, the middle lane.
Yeah, I'll say there's a little here.
But that RV park that we. They was gonna pull one out.
Out on TT.
Yeah, I didn't have to turn by.
Location as far as I was concerned, I mean, it, um, but MODOC had already approved them for a cul, cul de, cul, culvert height. Um, and that was like on a hill and it, I thought it was very dangerous. So I was kind of happy that it fell through, but um. I personally don't see any issue with recommending it.
I. I agree.
I agree, yeah. So we wanna do a motion to. I'll, I'll have a motion to uh. Recommend to the board. Give the CUP to this person.
The name of the park we had um, picked out and registered with the state, we've saved it with the state. It's gonna be called Nature's Highway. We're gonna try to keep most of the campers down, kind of over the hill, out of the view.
That's a plus.
State is, sorry to interject, but if you're concerned, if I'm concerned, both, but. I just thought about it, with the lack of turn lane. Uh, is it something that if we put in CUP? That we petition MODOC for vehicles entering flashing sign and that be the responsibility of the property owner? To warn those southbound drivers that if there's large vehicles entering the roadway?
The only problem with that, Scott, is that Como applied for one and was refused.
So Co- Como has a much better view than this area does. This being right there at the top of the hill. And having. With with those radar signs up, we've noticed that there's no problem with people going sixty, seventy miles an hour through there. So, yeah, the basic.
Do, to do in that, cause I, you know, I kind of wouldn't be surprised if people from that. Park camper is actually walking across the streets and then spinning. So I almost thought of like that danger too. Um, so as far as putting the yellow sign out there, now they do have that new um. The new storage unit area back there, and there's several large RVs parked back there just on their, you know, their monthly rate. At this time, so there, there are campers pulling in and out of that, that road, that Odo drive already from that. From that storage facility.
To, to answer your question, yes, you can certainly do that, can be part of the. Part of the requirement that the petition for. Such a warning, sign something, things.
So there's a motion on the floor?
I second.
I'll answer.
Alright.
We have any, got any miscellaneous items?
Uh, not really, I uh. Not really, I mean, we're just continuing to work on some of these items and kind of attack them one by one. And uh. And nothing particularly.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Adjourn.